Magic behind your curve, Dr.
The.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to welcome you all to the North Brunswick Township Board of Education's special meeting, our budget workshop. Today is Wednesday, March 12th. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali. Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel. Mr. Singh.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We do have a call.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, and Wednesday, November 27, 2024, in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board, reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, mailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly elected board members. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. Happy March. It's great to be here for our first meeting of the month. We've had a busy last couple of weeks, and so I will turn it over to Superintendent Chiroka to welcome our guests.
Thank you, Madam President. So, good evening, everybody, our millions of viewers out on YouTube. We are thrilled that you're here in person as well. And I'd like to start up here on the dais, and then I'll move over to the podium for my presentation. But I do want to start out by really thanking our community for everything they did to help us pass our $67 million bond referendum yesterday. It was a huge effort from everybody. We'd like, from the Board of Education Administration, really like to extend our deepest gratitude to all of our community members who voted yesterday in school bond referendum. We value and respect the voice of our community. Because of the large number of mail-in ballots, the results will not be certified until later this month, but people can continue to check on the Middlesex County website for the unofficial results. And as soon as we have those official results, we will share them with everyone. But I would like to thank the Board for their diligence and decision-making on deciding to pursue a referendum and to reinvest in the infrastructure of our schools. I'd like to thank Pete Campisano, our architect and an MBT grad, for helping us, guiding us through the process, through the entire process of going through all of our buildings, determining what our needs were, and helping us determine how we were going to go out for a bond referendum, plus signing all those documents for the state. I'd like to thank Rosa Hawk, our BA, for all her tireless work with the Bond Council, Mr. Campisano, and collaboratively with all of us to make this happen. I'd like to thank, you know, my entire cabinet, but specifically Dr. Kane Ellis, our District Coordinator of Communications, for all her marketing messages and helping get the word out to our community. To Greg Hershoff, who was our webmaster, for creating great webpages that really informed our community and with visuals and high-tech pictures that, you know, slid across the website, got people's attention. Jason Swain, our high school video teacher, for doing a great video that people could watch and understand more about the referendum. And Janine Khrystewski, my secretary, for her graphic design skills. We'd also, would be so remiss if we did not thank the MBTEA for their incredible hard work. You guys showed up at events at all the schools. You came to our meeting on Zoom where we explained the whole process so you could explain it back to people. You helped get out absentee ballots. You mailed out, you know, parties at Chili's to mail out flyers. And you made sure that, you know, community members who lived in town were part of the MBTEA, but also people who are NJAM members who lived in town knew about the referendum and can come out and make their decision. So, thank you guys so much for all of your assistance. So, I'm going to segue over to the others. All right, so we did change our slide here so that it shows a thank you to our community. That was a poor post, but put that in as the first one. But tonight is all about our budget presentation, making sure that we are ready for our fiscal year 2026. This is not a final budget presentation, but our preliminary budget presentation that we do each year. And as we wrap up our focus on the referendum, now we're going to be moving our focus onto the 2026 budget year. So, March 11th was the fixed date that we were given by the state once we signed up to do, have a bond referendum. And ironically, March 12th was the date that we had planned on our calendar before we knew that date, that we would do our budget hearing. And we felt it was important to move ahead and go ahead and do our budget hearing tonight because we did not want to show the community that, you know, we were changing something because of the bond referendum. These are two separate things, although they are uniquely connected together. The bond referendum was specifically for capital improvement projects in our schools. This is for our operating budget tonight that the state funds, and you will see all the different pieces of that that we will go through. As we start everything else, we start with our core mission, knowing that the North Brunswick mission of the North Brunswick Township School District, in partnership with the community, is to educate, inspire, and empower our students to meet challenges and achieve success. And if we develop our budget, we keep that in mind, as well as our core beliefs. And we've all, every one of you has seen that at every presentation, we start with that. But that guides our planning and our budgeting, in our long-term strategy plannings, so that we can make sure that our children, as it says here, are entitled to exceptional education based on their needs, characterized by challenging and differentiated curriculum, delivered by a highly qualified staff. And it's our collaborative responsibility with the home, school, and community. So, since I took over this role, we've been doing the budget hearing this way, and I started out with a 101 on school budget basics. And I know most of the board members have all heard this multiple times, we tried to change it up a little bit each year, but this is Mr. Singh's first official budget presentation, so there will be a test at the end. It's a choice, though, it's okay. So, school budget basics. Where does the district get its money to operate? So, we actually begin our budget planning back in the fall, October, November, and we begin the process of looking at and letting, preparing our budget workbooks for the principals and letting them know that we're thinking about planning for the 2026 school year. We told everybody to assume a flat budget, but had already been getting messages from all of our state and county meetings to expect some budget cuts. We usually do not know how much money we're going to get from the state until late February, which we usually get a few days, we get our allocations a few days after the governor's budget address. So, budgeting is an interactive process with schools, supervisors, principals, executive cabinet, to determine their wish lists of needs for the next school year. We look at programs, staffing, anticipated enrollment, and work very hard to balance our priorities with fiscal responsibilities for our community. So, our income sources. There are three, the local tax levy, state aid, grants, and entitlements. Different states fund schools in various ways. And so this part of it, I'm actually going to read to you because I want to make sure I get all the pieces right to you. But different schools do fund their schools in different ways. In New Jersey, schools are funded primarily through local property taxes and state aid. So, before 2012, districts had to present their budgets to the public for a vote every spring. You may remember those days, when you would have the school board election in the spring, as well as the vote for the budget. And in order to reduce the impact of property taxes, the state imposed a 2% cap on local property taxes. But in exchange, districts were allowed to opt out of the public budget vote if they stayed within the 2% cap. There are adjustments in allowances for school district enrollment increases, health benefit costs, and certain pension costs that can allow a district to go up and down away from that number. And these are called the bank capital and healthcare waivers that we will discuss later. School districts cannot bond money or increase taxes in the same way that a township or municipality can. As you know from our bond referendum vote yesterday, in order to approve the purchase of bonds to do projects throughout the schools, the district must get voter approval. We are limited for this operating budget to our 2% increase in the local tax levy, with those few exceptions I mentioned. We get money from federal and state grants and entitlements, and they vary year-to-year based on student enrollment. MBT schools has a Title I school, we are a Title I school-wide district, and MBTMS, our middle school, and Linwood Schools both receive Title I aid. Other federal grants include Title II A for professional learning and Title III for English language learners. State grants also change year-to-year, and we were told to expect a 25% cut this year in title programs for the fiscal year 26, and we have built that into the budget. And from what we understand, that is money that the state was getting from the federal government in ESER funds, and that they were supplementing our title money with that money, but that money will no longer be available, so that's why we're expecting those 25% cuts and built that into our budget. And then our preschool funding is also through the PEA or Preschool Expansion Aid Grant. Now comes the fun. The school funding formula is how they, the state, works to create a thorough and efficient education for students in New Jersey. So, the state calculates the necessary funding level to provide that thorough and efficient education for each district student. This is called the adequacy budget and the local fair share. So, this year, actually, although the SFRA was expiring, no new committee came up to, like, start the whole thing over and really investigate, because I don't think anybody really wanted to go into that yet, but they did do an investigation in this DOE. The state issued what's called a fiscal year 2026 year educational adequacy report. So, they took into consideration the cost of living increases, CPI, including updates for average wages, the cost of health, and other employee benefits, as well as costs for other key items to develop an updated adequacy budget. So, due to some districts having very large cuts last year, which I'm sure you heard about, some of our neighbors suffered some of these cuts more than 3%, they put in guardrails in this year's budgeting, in this year's year, into the calculation to make sure that reductions to any district would be capped at 3% and increases would be capped at 6%. They made some changes in special education funding to make it an enrollment-based and not a percent of total enrollment. They changed the equalization portion of state aid and take a 3% at-year average of equalized property values and district income rather than one year of current data. And then they use multipliers to impact, to figure out property values and district wealth, all to determine the local fair share that the local taxpayer should be paying. So, this adequacy budget, the state starts with a baseline of how much it costs to educate one elementary school student. That's your lowest-cost student, the basic elementary student with no other factors added in. So, the updated year base amount this year, based on all their calculations, is $14,972. One elementary student counts as 1.0 students. This is the base per pupil, or the BPA. Different amounts were set for preschool students, and there are actually new amounts this year for in-district students, private provider students, and head start students. There's different dollar amounts for each of those. The state recognizes the cost of educating older students being greater, and so they begin to add different weights. A middle school student, which is classified 6 through 8, not our fifth grade, our fifth grade still counts as elementary, is calculated as 1.04 students. High school students are 1.15, and that's actually down from the 2020 adjustment. VOTEC students are an added .23. So, additional weights are added for each student if they are in the free and reduced lunch program. And please note that in North Brunswick, our number is currently 53% of our students aren't free and reduced lunch. These students are identified as at-risk or needing additional supports, and therefore, if a district is under 20% free and reduced lunch, their additional weighing is only .42%, but for a district like us, the number is between 40 and 59%, the weighing is .52. Additional weighting is added of .50 for limited English proficient students, as the cost to support their additional language learning is greater. If a student is both additional LEP and at-risk, there's additional weighing for that student's cost. So, when determining the base amount per pupil for our district, the state looks at all the data that we submitted in the fall, on October 15th, in our student count, and they create a weighted representation for the entire student population. And that number is then multiplied by geographic cost adjustment that factors in the cost of living in the county in which the district is located. And because New Jersey is such a diverse state in terms of cost of living, it's, that's an important factor. Sussex County could be very different than Middlesex County, the cost of living. So, once the base amount of per pupil, the adequate amount to educate a student has been established for the district, the state then determines how to pay for it. The state calculates how much the local community must pay and how much the state is responsible for. The state takes into consideration local property values and the income of the district's residents. These are calculated to create the local cost share. Technically, the local cost share is the difference between a district's adequacy budget and equalization aid. In reality, the state derives what is an adequate budget and then really determines how much equalization aid can be provided. They do kind of mess around with those numbers, and that's what we've seen and what we've been able to figure out. So, for North Brunswick this year, MBT schools' state aid was cut by 3%. If we look at our state aid documents, it would have been 6%, but we were held harmless because of those guardrails. We were held harmless to 3% or $1.7 million. That was the 10th largest cut in the state, the fourth largest in the county. The cut is in the equalization aid area, again, because if we look at our student population, we were hoping for some added money because we have increased our at-risk population. But what we see is that equalized property value and district income were considered increased, and coupled with how they increased the state multipliers, the end result was an increase in the local fair share and our expected adequacy budget. So, that has left us having to work harder this year to get you the budget, but we have done a lot of collaboration, and we are able to do that. So, other parts of the SFRA include transportation aid, transportation aid, special education, extraordinary special education aid, and security aid. And we get extra dollars based on our student population, our special education numbers. We get transportation aid for regular transportation and different amounts for our students with IEPs. Additional money was added this year for security. Luckily, we have been in a position in this district where we have already done a very good job building in our security within our local budget. We would like to welcome Dr. Z, my predecessor and successor here, because this is his favorite slide. And, you know, this is, this is really important, and, you know, as Dr. Z mentored myself and our cabinet members, these are the things that we learned as we did budget with him. You know, this job is a balance, providing the budgetary balance, the fiscal responsibility to our community, and making sure that we are meeting the needs and honoring the people in North Brunswick who are paying their taxes by being responsible with our dollars, as well as providing educational integrity and making sure that we are educating every child and doing the most we can with every one of those dollars. Parents looking to purchase a home in their, in this district, or to rent the district, look to the reputation of the district. They want to see that the schools are well-run and exercise this budgetary balance. So, our budgetary challenges, we have a few, you know. So, for fiscal year 2025, last year, we were able to meet our needs because we got a $9.8 million state aid increase, and we also increased our taxes 2%. So, we were able to be very comfortable in meeting our challenges and our needs of students still returning from COVID loss. But for the fiscal year 2026, as you can see, we have many budgetary challenges. And I'll have to tell any one of you that there's inflation and the cost of everything has gone up. Some of the things that we are facing in terms of our specific budgetary challenges are the 3% state aid cut. We have seen a 12% increase in health benefits costs. We have seen, we have settled in negotiations with our administrators and our teachers' union for contractual increases, and these were important increases that we needed to put into place and contracts that were the right thing for our staff to make sure that we provided a competitive salary for them and that we were able to stabilize the loss of veteran teachers. So, you know, those are costs that we have, but they're there for a good reason. Obviously, seeing an increase in energy costs. We were able to go out to our transportation department, to our partners, and negotiate a 3% increase in transportation costs. We have that 25% anticipated cut in title funding. We have the limit of the 2% levy cap, and we have an increase in special education costs, ELL learners. Special education tuition costs are up 100%. Costs for special ancillary services such as behaviorists, speech therapists, they continue to rise, and as you know, as everybody who pays their health insurance, healthcare costs, continue to rise and increase. So, we do exercise that fiscal responsibility here in the district. When we do any purchasing, we follow the state regulations. We do a lot of purchases through state co-ops, which allow us, they exercise pre-bidding at the best price, and we were able to go through them and do a lot of savings. We do provide a competitive benefit structure, and we are looking to do a partnership with some other districts and a health clinic in the future that hopefully may save us some money in our health benefit structure as well. We have staff benefit contributions. We have our enterprise programs such as our Chartwell's Food Service. We exercise our energy conservation. We have our solar panels and have done that for many years in the district. We conduct residency checks, and that's an important factor that the community needs to understand, that, you know, state law says that a student must live in North Brunswick to attend school in North Brunswick. And we've got a very good reputation for our special education programs and other programs, and people will try to use addresses that they don't have to stay and be in town. So, one of the ways we make sure that the students who attend our schools live in town is by conducting regular residency checks. We have done careful appropriation of reserve funds and determined where that's going to go next year. We have very smart use of our grant funds, and this year in particular, we're looking at how we're using those grant funds and making adjustments. We have done quite a few shared services. We have the stable tax ratables, retirements, and attrition, our locations that we can find savings for some of the money that we are needing to recoup. And we've actually made adjustments to our charter school transportation. As you know, last year, we went to have a shared service agreement with the charter, two of the charter schools, TECs and Central Jersey College Prep, and gave them basically the aid and loo, and we're providing the bid of the transportation for their children. Next year, we've told them, we'll give you the aid and loo, you need to go out to bid at ESC and J and bid out those charter school transportation routes, and our people are out of it, so. And that, we do know that the preschool expansion has also helped us with our fiscal responsibility because we've added in almost 481 preschool students in our universe right now. And those students, those costs, although they also provide costs, they bring our students into us earlier and help us begin to get their early education in, which hopefully reduces the long-term cost of extra programs for them, but it also helps offset other costs through the preschool program. So, as we want to maintain educational integrity with knowing that we're having a challenging budget year, we want to make sure that we prioritize those programs that really are impacting student learning and growth. So, this current year, Dr. Johnson's office has worked hard to implement the three and four, grade three and four Benchmark Advanced ELA program, which we have seen incredible in-depth learning coming out of our students, really helping their, them understand how to learn how to be really good readers and utilizing the science of reading. And so, we have budgeted next year to implement that for K1 and 2. So, that is, that is a significant cost to purchase that curriculum. However, we feel it's very important for our students and where we're going. Additionally, we looked at our math scores in middle school and our Algebra I scores in high school, and we have had a task force working under Dr. Johnson and Dreya Lamagra to really analyze where, where our needs are in our math curriculum, so our teachers have the support and a really strong curriculum to work from, and we will be adopting the recommended curriculum that they came up with, which was, it was Amplify. And so, that's a really important thing, and that's something that was not touched in this budget. It was very important for us. We've, you know, picked out technology needs, professional learning, the most important priorities and facilities and maintenance. You know, we continue to make sure that we're going to be supporting those post-academic, post-COVID academic challenges, post-COVID mental health challenges. We will be reducing some of the services from university behavioral health, however, we will be making it up with work that we've been doing with Rutgers, with their student interns and counseling. So, while we may be taking away some programs, we're bringing back and keeping others. And we've made sure that our safety and security is still priority one as well. So, some of the things that we've actually done this year is pausing some of the refresh of some of the technology. We've kind of prioritized exactly which technology we will need for next year to make sure that we are picking, you know, using the best bang for our buck. So, this is preserving personnel priorities, but it's actually preserving personnel and curricular priorities. So, in order to present to you a balanced budget that honors that educational integrity that we have prioritized, we really want to continue to keep students in district. We know we have about approximately 500 students in charter schools. That number has stabilized a little bit over the last couple of years. We do see students coming back, especially for our middle school and our high school programs, which is terrific. programs, which is terrific. And so we are continuing to provide opportunities for acceleration and success. Our GNT programs that we have started and expanded are second to none in the county. And quite honestly, our teachers in that are leading the way in the state as well in those programs. We continue to provide comprehensive specialized programs. We continue to meet the needs of our preschool universe, almost at the max of that preschool universe. We are adding one more preschool class at one of our preschool outside providers this coming year because we don't actually have room internally, and we have a really good partner that we will be offering that to next year. We continue to make sure that we're meeting the academic and social needs of our subgroups through, and our compliance requirements. We're committed to continuing our intervention and enrichment supports. As I mentioned, bringing in the K2 Benchmark and the middle sex, the middle grades Amplify. We have also prioritized maximizing efficiency and flexibility, seeking ways to optimize staffing models and collaborating across our departments to ensure that all roles continue to support student achievement. We're examining retirements, resignations, and reassignments to allow us to do that without cutting my evil. We're examining role modifications to reduce any duplication of services and continuing to utilize available grant funds to build sustainable programs and meet our personnel goals. We want to continue to keep our talented staff because that is essential to making sure we're keeping stability and effectiveness of our programs and continuing to examine ways to retain our skilled staff by recognizing their contribution, providing opportunities for advancement, and fostering supportive and collaborative culture. So our operating budget, how is that broken down? Okay, our proposed operating budget is made of the general fund, grants and entitlements, and the debt service fund. The general fund is $149,727,235. That's the general expense, capital outlay, and charter school costs. The grants and entitlements, we have state and federal sources here, $10,625,000, $10,625,500. And our debt service fund, which is our board share of the debt service revenue and the local tax levy, is $8,694,573. We're in depth as we go down. So our total revenue, you see that general fund, that number is, you know, 149 million. That's 88.6% of our budget. The debt service of just over 8.6 million is 5.1%. Preschool aid makes up 4.5% of our budget. Grants and entitlements, just over $3 million, is 1.8%. And that gives us our total of just over $169 million. Our general fund revenue for '25-'26, here's our tax levy, which is 61%. Our state aid is 37%. Our reserves at 9.9%, miscellaneous revenue at .3%. One big change for us, you'll see this year, semi. That is where we can take services that our speech teachers and other people are providing to special needs students, and we can apply to semi for reimbursement for those services. And they basically told us that's being cut. You'll see on the next slide that that was over $200,000 last year, and they've told us, don't inspect that. So we budgeted $44,000 for that. So that's actually a big, a big loss for us. If you look on the next slide, there's a comparison for you. General, general fund revenue comparison, you can see on the left-hand side is the '25- '26 upcoming year. So you can see how the tax levy has gone up. It's 91 million. From '24-'25, it was 88 million. It's now at 61%, and it was at 59.6%. State aid was at 37.7%. And you see this, last year, it was higher at almost 40%, 39%. The amount of maintenance and capital reserves that we're going to be using this year will be about $1.3 million or .9%. Last year, we used about .8%. Miscellaneous revenue is .3%. Again, there's that semi number. You can see the comparison between this year on the left, and last year was $261,000. So that as well is a cut for us. So you can see the difference. Our total here for these funds, the general fund, the general revenue is 149.7 versus 148 last year. So breaking some of that down, you can see our appropriations here, and as we've done pie charts and everything else in the past, this is just a table for you. But obviously, we are a people business. Salaries and benefits are 71.6% of our budget. Charter schools, Dr. Z pounded for us for years, right? They take away from a lot of our operating money. That's 5.6% of our budget. They get over $8 million from our budget to educate the students. And basically, I've seen their curriculum, they're not doing anything differently than we are. You know, those kids get, it's very nice, they get a very small intimate location to go to school, but they run in a bus for an hour. But they don't do anything uniquely different to what we do. But they do skim off a lot of, a lot of students from us. Transportation is 5.5%. Facilities, 5.2%. People's Personnel Services, Special Education, that's 3.8%. Tuitions, 2.6%. Instruction, 2.3%. Administration, Finance, and Technology, 1.6%. And Capital, 1.5%. So that makes up our total operating budget. So again, talking about our fiscal responsibility, using our capital and maintenance reserve to complete projects that we are not doing with the bond referendum. As we talk to people about the bond referendum, we were very clear to them that the bond was very much for capital projects, big projects, HVAC, windows, doors, new boilers, redoing the brickwork around the high school that we couldn't pay for by saving the money every year. But we do save money every year, and we have prioritized our fiscal responsibility on projects. We have capital reserves and maintenance reserves, and some of the projects that we have planned for this year is the MBTH auditorium sound system. We've been at plays this year and performances of our students, and unfortunately, you cannot hear them. We've upgraded the lights in the last couple of years, the entire lighting system was done last year, and so that has to be a priority. We need to make sure that that beautiful jewel at the high school is still somewhere people can go and see a performance and really value the sound. It needs to, you need to be able to hear it. But we're using the maintenance reserve to paint outside schools and do concrete planters that need to be fixed, walkways, tile the floors in certain rooms, remediate a baseball field. Look at the high school athletic fields. The high school needs some concrete work again. They did some in the front last year, they're going to do some in the back this year. Because every time I go by, what do I say, Rosa? It's all crumbling.
It's crumbling, I get rid of it.
Right. Repair leaks, things like that. Those are all priorities for us. And then general things that we have to do every year, upkeep of the fire alarm systems, gymnasium upkeep, playgrounds, and so on, painting projects. So we have prioritized those in this budget as well. You have to maintain your house. Even if you get any air conditioning, you may still have to paint your house, right? So here is the total budget for approval that includes the general fund, grants and entitlements, and repayment of debt or debt service, $169 million. A lot of money. So striving for that budgetary balance again, set up twice. The tax levy impact for the 2026 fiscal year budget, we will be recommending in this budget to take the allowable increase of 2%. I remind you that the state aid cut is 3% or $1.7 million. And if we take what's called the health benefits waiver, we're allowed to take $1.4 million. So that health benefits waiver is what we talked about at the beginning. It's a mechanism that they put in, understanding that each district may have really heavy health benefits costs, and we do. And they look at each district individually and do a calculation saying, okay, because you have these heavy costs, you may take this extra amount in taxes from your local levy beyond the 2%. Each year, it's there in the system. We did not take it last year. Another amount comes up the next year. It bumps up. We've learned this, right, Rosa? It turns into bank capital the previous, the next year if you don't use it. But each year, you build up more. We have not taken 100% of what is available to us. So we have our tax levy impact to our local taxpayer. Of the allowable increase is 2%. The healthcare waiver tax increase would be another 1.57% based on that $1.4 million. So that adds up to a 3.57 tax levy proposed for the high healthcare cost. But not really. So in reality, what the taxpayer will see is that the debt levy is down. So the debt levy will be coming down because we have paid off, we are paying off this spring, previous debt, which is why we had the referendum. But as a board, you made the wise choice in saying, hey, we only want to spend this much. We were told we could do projects up to $90 million. We did not take all those projects. We decided as a board that it was going to be $60 million and $67 million that we took. So we've got that, the bonds that we're going to buy for that, reinvest that money. But we also have, the debt levy is down because of the other money that we did not spend. So that helps us in this, where the tax levy plus the debt levy being down makes it a wash, and that taxes will only go up for the local taxpayer 2.5%. So it does make that a much more comfortable number than that 3.57, right? That's what people will see. So the impact on the local home that's assessed at, 161,000.
161 million.
161 million, wow, where are we?
We're not living in mansions, yeah.
So an average home, it's $137 a year, dollars a year, or $1148 per month. The budget variables, this is a preliminary budget. We have to then submit it next week to the county and Department of Education for review. We may see additional retirements and resignations that we can work into our savings. We make it better benefit rates or shared service possibilities. We do not know yet what the impact of federal grants will be because we've all heard about possible changes at Department of Education. So that could benefit us or negatively affect us. So that's something we have to be ready to handle. Our enrollment numbers, charter school enrollments, and obviously, now the final official results of the referendum vote are looking really strongly in our favor. Hopefully, when that is certified, we'll be able to continue to keep the numbers as they are on this final vote payment. And this budget does also include a payment in September, in the fall, for an anticipated bond purchase. I'd like to remind you again, an investment in knowledge pays the best interest. Benjamin Franklin. This is the amount that you will be voting on for approval for the preliminary budget. And this is the sheet that each of you have in front of you, which has the breakdown of all those different amounts that I spoke about. You can see the general expense. I can't even see it on this piece of paper, so I apologize. Can't even read it on my own sheet with my .35 glasses. So thank you all for being such good listeners. Any questions on this preliminary budget?
Question and/or comment? We, of course, were privy to the draft agenda, you know, as always, so this is not our first time seeing these numbers and what's been proposed in light of the fact that we were made aware that we were going to be hit with a $1.7 million cut. So I'm aware of that. I just want to talk about the healthcare cost waivers because that was not an easy decision to be made. I know that we did not enter into that decision lightly, but I want to confirm the healthcare waiver costs we can only use for the year at issue. Is that right?
We, this, the amount that we created this year, we can use this year. If we don't use it, it will, it'll turn into banked cap. And we have monies from the previous years that we chose never to take.
Yes, right.
If you recall, we discussed that in committee. And we decided, since we were already getting a substantial amount of money with the increase in state aid, we've chosen not to use that. We have banked that money. We are using the money that is created this year in '25-'26.
Okay, that's available to us.
And no more.
Yes, okay, all right.
In order to balance the budget and obviously assist with the 12% increase in healthcare that we are seeing today in experience and then anticipating that again in the future year.
Right, whereas otherwise, if we were not cut $1.7 million, we may not have.
We would have made different choices.
Exactly.
Exactly. And that's where we were last year versus compared to this year.
Yes, definitely.
The decision point was different, yes.
Any other questions? Comments?
I have a comment. I mean, obviously, hearing the fact that we were 10th in the state and 4th in the county, that's a tough pill to swallow. So I really, and this board, on behalf of the board, really appreciates the hard work that you all put into this because obviously, that was not easy. That was not an easy thing to see for all of us either. And the fact that we are keeping priority of our students, our student achievement, and our staff, and maintaining our staff, that's extremely important because the last thing any of us wants up here is for the children and, of course, the staff to be negatively impacted by this. Their learning is what is most important at the end of the day. So we really all appreciate that because that's not, you know, that's a hard hit.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mrs. Toroka, you mentioned enrollment numbers as a variable. What are we seeing in terms of enrollment projections for next year?
I didn't have that. So, you know, we had our demographic study before we went into the referendum as well to make sure that we were, you know, using our money wisely. You know, our enrollment numbers fluctuate throughout the year, but we are seeing, you know, we have about 500 children in charter schools. That's been fairly consistent. That number has pretty much stabilized. We have about 430 students in pre-K. So our numbers generally over the last few years.
Wait, they do the state aid numbers?
You know, and again, this doesn't include everything. It includes all the charter school students. But in 2019, we were at 6,288 students, and each year since then, the number's gone down, went down a little bit. It went the lowest in 2021 with 5,974 students. It went back up in the 6000s for '22 and '23. October '24, we're about 5,981 students. That does not include our pre-K students, so you add an extra 431. But we do see lower class sizes throughout our different schools. So next year, this year, our graduating class is 100 students larger than the incoming freshman class. So again, those are things that we've taken into consideration in setting up classes for next year at the high school.
And by next year, you mean for '27?
For '26.
Or '26, June 26th? Okay, okay.
And we continue to monitor those numbers.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I made adjustments accordingly.
Mrs. Toroka, just a quick question. So just looking at the, the charter school amounts, you know, about 8.3 million, it's about 500 students, so that comes about to be almost $17,000 spent per student. In our high school, let's say the average student, I saw the number was like 15,000 for elementary plus the weights and stuff. Is that, does that come close?
It comes pretty close, yes.
Okay, so it's about the same?
You have to remember that those charter school numbers also has, has more than just the base costs in there. The numbers that we're seeing are the base costs, but if there's special education needs, they too, charter schools also have low income. There is calculations in order for them to then translate into the tuition that they charge us.
So it's variable.
Yeah. And it varies by school. It varies by district too. So students from New Brunswick, New Brunswick pays a different tuition because their, their actually per pupil number is different. It's based on a calculation of our per pupil number in North Brunswick. So they get different amounts from New Brunswick, North Brunswick, East Brunswick, each town pays a different amount.
Got it.
And we did, you know, we learned from Dr. Z again, not to budget that full amount that they tell us we hold in reserve, that other amount. Otherwise, we couldn't use it if we allocated it all for charter. So we know to hold that in reserve.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions?
Anyone else?
Thank you very much for your attention. I know there's a lot to take in. Mr. Singh, I will be sending your quiz to your laptop. And I'm sure you'll do quite well.
It's not passable.
But nobody can, nobody can read while Mr. Singh is taking his test.
No, bro.
All right. Mrs. Hock, I think the next piece is on you. Mrs. Ha, I think the next piece is on you.
Let's see here. So if you could ask for a motion here?
Yes.
Well, actually, we need to
Do a public session, yeah.
On the budget, if anyone would like to come up. Thank you.
So at this time
Thank you. Mr. Bush is always a lifesaver.
We'll do a public session on our 2025-2026 budget items only. If you'd like to come to the podium and speak about the budget presentation that we just received, we ask that you just come up and state your name. You'll be given three minutes.
My name's Beth Pazner. I'm the president of the North Brunswick Township Education Association. We're the union that represents the teachers and support staff of North Brunswick Township Public Schools. Although it is related to the budget, I want to first talk about the referendum because it is related to the budget. We are thrilled to hear the unofficial news that the referendum vote on questions 1 and 2 was successful. We look forward to making our schools the healthy and safe places that they're supposed to be. I want to thank the NBT Board of Ed and Central Office for recognizing the need for our school districts' improvements, putting this out there to the public for a referendum, and for all the work to get it passed. I want to thank our members of the NBTEA, both residents and non-residents who supported this referendum by stamping and writing postcards, volunteering at school events, having conversations with parents, speaking at board meetings, and so much more. And most importantly, I do want to thank the North Brunswick voters who recognized the need for these improvements and showed up at the polls to exercise their right to vote. As for the budget presentation tonight, we recognize it takes a lot of work to get to this point, and we do appreciate your efforts. With a loss of state aid across the state and horror stories of cuts across neighboring districts, I do want to thank Central Office for presenting a budget where the integrity of our educational system is left intact, our current staff is left intact, and we can continue to move forward and do the best for our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we, as a board, echo Superintendent Toroka's thanks to all of you in the NBTEA. Thank you for all of the hard work that you did to get this referendum passed. It does not go unnoticed, and we recognize each and every event that you had gone to, we saw on your, you know, social media platforms. So thank you all so much for everything that you did. Anyone else about the referendum specifically?
For the budget.
Or, excuse me, the budget. Budget. All right. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Keefe, I'm going to give you credit for that one.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. So at this time, we need a motion to adopt the tentative budget for the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Mr. Wen?
No, it's Mr. Turner.
Come on, Rosa. I'm not on my game here with the, and second, I'm sorry.
Elise O'Jakes.
Oh, good. Well, you know, I'm going to take a roll call for this very important vote. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
The tentative budget is approved and accepted.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, we will have a public session on any matter. At this time, if anyone from the public would like to come up to the podium and speak on any matter, you'll be given three minutes. We just ask that you state your name and sign in. Okay. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you all for being here. We appreciate all the extra time that everyone has put into, you know, crafting the budget, doing everything that, you know, Superintendent Toroka and your team has done. Rosa, you as well, thank you so much for everything. The board also just wants to recognize Dr. Zakowski, as Superintendent Toroka said, is in our audience tonight. We're very glad to have him here. We're very excited to welcome you and work, we'll welcome you back and work with you in the coming school year. So thank you for being here, and we look forward to continuing our conversations with you. Anyone else from the board have anything to say before we wrap up? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.